I have a motion to adjourn, please. Did you get it all? Okay, well this next is school highlights. And of course, this is one of the big highlights for us. And so Dr. Anderson, turn this over to you.
Good evening. We are so excited. Not only do we have many, many years of experience in this room right now, but March starts Music in March Month. So we also have some young people that are here that want to play especially for you. Because we're having this event, it is perfect that our young people are here to play a little bit for our guests that are here this evening, our staff that's here. And then we're gonna roll right on into the rest of the evening with our 25-year recognition. So Ms. Krueger, I'll turn it over to you as we get ready to celebrate Music in March Month. Last year, we had the Madrigals. This year, we have Strings, I believe.
So March is Music in Our Schools Month. And so we do have an official proclamation that we will be presenting to the students here shortly when they come in. They're just tuning up their instruments, so they'll be in just a minute. And we, as a district, are very proud of our arts programs here at Tewka Public Schools, whether it's fine arts, music arts. It's something that a lot of schools have gone away from with budget cuts. And it's something that here at Tewka Public Schools, we have really expanded upon. And we are very fortunate that we have the partners that we have. So with that, I will welcome the Tewka High Orchestra. This is a small group from Tewka High School's orchestra. For the third concert of the year, we focus a lot on small chamber groups rather than working with everyone with the conductor. So it gives students a chance to learn leadership skills and figure out how to play together in sort of a more intimate setting. Incidentally, we also have a concert this Tuesday at Tewka High School. Would love for you to come out and support us. So we have Alfer, Laquisha, Lizzie, Badza, Sierra, and Makaya. I am Kenya Patterson, and my brother is Forrest Evans. And we have... We'll start with Home With Girls in the Morning, which is a traditional acclamation of Boog Toot. All right, the guests will play the second piece. This is The Mist-Covered Mountain, which is a traditional Celtic tune. We'll have some additional guitar.
And as you're getting adjusted and getting a few ideas, I do want to ask our young people, what colleges are you planning to go to next year? All of these educators have looked around this room and have helped you quite a bit get to where you are. So I'm gonna start all the way at the very end. Give a beautiful smile. And so I have to make this transition and add an additional person to share with us. What college are you planning to go to?
I haven't really decided, but I'm looking at Clark Ainsley, Washington. Rossford, Royal University.
And do you know your major for next year?
Either it's like all of need or two of all.
Okay. And your major in North College, if you have decided?
I haven't, I'm not always decided. But at the moment, my first choice would be Johns Hopkins or Northwestern.
Both of you. And then college or career, because sometimes you're going the other path as well. College or career, if you've decided?
I haven't really decided, but I know I'll go with something. I'm going to Columbia University. I'm looking for Katie. I don't think I'm lucky enough, but I would like to do something. I'm looking at Berkeley University.
Women's in Action. And March is also Women's History Month. And so we have some women that'll be blazing the trail and making history. We'll turn it back on over to you. Oh, is there a gentleman in the back there? Is there someone in the back there? And so did I miss you? Did I miss you in terms of our doctor? She said, oh, you missed a student.
No, but I tend to have co-teachers.
That's what I thought.
However, when Ben grew up, he wanted to come back and be a teacher at his home school. When Forrest grew up, sorry.
Sorry. Okay, it's great. He believes you know where they're at.
Before we leave, can we say a special thank you? It was delightful to have you here with us this evening. Thank you. We've been supporters of the arts for a long time on this board. And every time we have someone who moves like you, we get excited because we didn't always get the right thank you. Thank you.
And before you guys leave, we would like to recognize Mr. Reynolds as well, who's here over in the back there. And we would like to present you with the official proclamation. And Laquisha, Laquisha, I'm so sorry. But we would like to let you have the honors of pulling the proclamation on behalf of the Orchestra for Music in Our Schools Month. And don't go too far, because we want to grab a picture with you guys. We have the school board here in just a little bit. So if you want to hang out in the back, and we'll call you back up in just a little bit for a picture. All right. Everyone is not here, but we can start and maybe we'll have some come in.
And as we get ready to get started, I just at least want to take a moment to say thank you. Twenty-five years is a long time, and we thank you for your work, your service, and your continued dedication. Often, we do that at the end, but it's the first thing I want to throw out there for you all today. And we're gonna turn it on over to Ms. Krueger to get everything started.
Okay. We're gonna call you guys up one at a time to actually receive your award up here tonight. So if there's anyone in the hallway who's here for the 25-year ceremony, we'll invite you. And we've got some seats up here in the front, so if anyone out there is here for that. But we're just gonna start at the top, so we don't miss anyone, and go down the list. And then again, we'll want to take pictures with you guys as well. So we will ask you to hang out for just a little bit and do pictures with the board as well. So Deborah Ashmore. Rick Binky. Kayleen Bowles. Pam Campbell. Barbara Crekey. Beth Courier. Carrie Dillon. Nancy Ellis. Terry Collins. Linda Green. Tisharo Hale. Cynthia Herman. Jeffrey Kaufman. Yeah, I know she's here, and I'm sorry, because I probably didn't mess it up. Elizabeth Max... Say it for me again.
McKesick.
McKesick. Julia Odell. Ruth Kula.
Kula.
And I know she's not here tonight, but just so that we recognize her, Bridget Reimer. Devin Schinaman. I don't think he's here either, but J.R. Schellenberger. Rance Smith. Lisa Bullen. Dersie Watson. Dennis Watson. And I don't think she was able to join us either, but let's make sure we recognize her. Patricia Williamson. Robin Worts. And our final one tonight is Amber Workman.
We're going to Business by Consent. Motion for that?
Yes. Yes, Madam Vice President. I would like to move that we approve the Business by Consent, but I have one change that I'd like to ask for. And that would be that I have fourteen point one. Operations contract. For the Westar Energy Education Station, near active education component, be separated by fully support of that, either as well, of course. But even if they're not paying, this is still a district contract. This is what we've got to be with my employer. I'd like to refuse myself. But I'm just here to be honest with both sides of the law. So with that, I move that the board approve all except item fourteen point one. The items have been swiped since this presentation. The president, who's intended to sign the special project in person, can trace board on that under the board of education.
Okay, any questions? I have one, and I apologize. I just, until I looked at it today, I didn't realize it. But I'm looking at twelve point one, the Harlem High School Field Trip to Italy. The form that they have in there is all signed for 2017. Did you look? It's an old... So I... It was submitted during the first semester, so I will... But it is for the forthcoming... I mean, it's all just... Okay, it was really hard to tell, actually, because Dr. Wood signed it originally. So I thought maybe it happened last year. Correct. And then we sent it back to be sure that the current principle... Any other questions? We're ready for it. I think it's in front of you. Just a comment. All people look at the number of kind donations that we hand for Tewka High School in particular. We'll send some significant ones. Madam Vice President, I move to make a period of item fourteen point one under items of disposition of this by consent. And I wonder if somebody would like to explain for those here what that item is gonna be about? Income. I find this pretty exciting. This is something we've long waited, Mr. Robbins, as we've developed the Kansas Education and Science Park.
Westar was kind enough to contract with the company that is mentioned there to develop this interactive display so that you can point it at either the wind turbine, and it will show a wind turbine actually operating and producing electricity. The same would be true if you were to aim at the solar panels that we have there. And also, as far as the grid itself, in looking at the substation. It was, this is something that's been in the works since basically 2016. And the company, and the name escapes me right now. I didn't call it that. The name has changed from when we first started contracting with them. But anyway, they have finally developed this technology to the point that it's ready to be introduced. And I guess the other thing that I'll say concerning our fabulous partner, Westar Energy, even though this was embarked upon two years ago, part of the documents that you see there is an invoice for $70,000, which was part of the cost for this development work. Westar, years ago, had given the money to the district to fund this process and to fund this work, this development. So we have the dollars. This is something that's been provided. This certainly is gonna help from an educational standpoint for students who travel and venture out there to tour that facility. And it's not costing the district one penny, because Westar was kind enough to donate in excess of $85,000 for this work.
Next items on the agenda, superintendent's report.
At this time, we have two items. One, we have Ms. Crowe that is here, and she'll be speaking momentarily. We also are preparing, we're thirteen days away from our celebration of learning assessment, and we're excited. With that excitement, every board meeting we've been leading up to that, we have been inviting a secondary and an elementary principal. We do ask that our elementary principal from Meadows, Ms. Johnson, to come on up and just share for a couple of minutes a little bit about how we're serving all students in all levels, level one, two, three, four. But anything that she'd also like to highlight regarding how she's getting ready for the celebration of learning assessment. Hello, Ms. Johnson.
Well, good evening. Thank you so much for having me. I'm excited to be here. As many of you know, Meadows is a pretty dynamic place, and we have an awful lot going on. And I wanted to highlight several things because I believe that intervention goes hand in hand with enrichment. And I believe that our schools are here to serve not only in the academic area, but also in our physical area and our civic areas. So things that are important to me at Meadows are that we provide all of those opportunities for kids. So I started making a list, because I got nervous that I'd walk up here and start forgetting things. And I got into my list and thought, no wonder I'm tired, you guys. I'm tired. We're busy at Meadows. And the first thing I wanted to say is congratulations to Mr. Woods. His son was in the spelling bee. And I noticed that because Meadows, for the first time in quite some time, had three students qualified. We have traditionally always had one, maybe two, but this year, three students qualified. And that is in part due to the enrichment opportunity that we provide. So our students have been staying after school with our teachers, and not just those three, but a whole large group of kids, and just practicing and learning about words and language and how spelling works. And I think that made such an impact on us. So that's an intervention. That happened for kids that had disabilities, who might be labeled special education. Happened for kids that might have 504 plans. And it happened for kids that were gifted. They all got that opportunity. So then I got thinking about, we've got math leagues training right now. So we're gonna compete in the citywide math competition. And you know that Meadows does that every year. And do you know that we place top ten consistently? We get someone in there, and that is in due part to an enrichment opportunity that our teachers provide. They stay after school with kids. And those kids can be any kid. And that's a high academic achieving child who also needs intervention. They need enrichment opportunities. And then I got to thinking about the physical part. You know that we are very proud of our track at Meadows. We are runners. We have a run club, very active. And I counted on the wall today before I came. I have 21 children that already have ran 100 miles this school year. I'm on track to have 40 to 50 kids hit 100. And I'll probably have 10 that will run 200 miles during the school year at school on their recess. That's pretty remarkable, but we're enriching kids for their physical well-being. And some of those kids maybe aren't that great at academics, and maybe they're not getting recognition in academics, but their picture is on the wall. And I had a dad stop me at one of the music programs and say, "You don't know how special that is. He doesn't do well other places. He gets to shine there." So we can't forget about that. Then I got to thinking about our civic duties. And how do we teach children to give back? And how do we teach children to give back? My list goes on and on about the things we've done at Meadows this year to give back. My student council leads this charge, another opportunity to be leaders, an enrichment opportunity. And we've given money and personal items to the VA. We donated items to the Helping Hand Champaign Shelter. We had a canned food drive. By the way, we won the one here in Topeka. Topeka Public Schools to stock our pantry. Meadows won that canned food drive. I don't know if that made this board agenda, but I'm just competitive though. I need you to note that. So we won, folks, we won. Little, Little's Elementary School, we beat that high school, Topeka. All right. Then we started raising money to give thanks to the people that have sponsored us. So we have churches and businesses that partner with us to do things for us. My students raised money to do thank you gifts to them. So we just got done getting those thank you gifts out to our community. And currently, anyone wants to give, I'll give you an opportunity. We're taking donations for the elderly that live in the Tanglewood Health and Rehabilitation Hospital. So that is our civic enrichment that we give children. Now, I'm happy to talk about academics because it's a very important thing, and we are gearing up for state assessments. Our teachers are dynamic. And every day, every child is being seen in a small group setting with their classroom teacher to focus on their particular needs in reading and in math. The lessons look different because what one child needs is not what another one needs. And then we look to stretch our resources and give additional support to kids that are struggling. You're darn right, we do. And it might be through a paraprofessional. It might be through a special ed teacher. It might be through a title teacher. But we don't just do that for the lowest kids in the building. We have kids that are missing a standard, are missing a skill, and a little bit of help could get them over that edge so that they are at grade level or they are achieving higher. So it's not just about intervening for the lowest students, the lowest performers. They need support, you're right. But that's not the only kid in the building that needs help. And so I don't want to be short sighted in when I designate how we're going to support kids and only go by a number and say, "You have the lowest score, you get the intervention." That's not how we do it. So we've really worked on our PLC teams, and our PLC teams take our students and assess standards. And there are kids that have holes and gaps. And so when we start looking at intervention, we start looking at, can we help this child with this hole, this gap? And that is through all of the resources. We have an ELL program at Meadows that does intervention for our ELL students. We have the special ed program, and then we have the Title I resources. And we're team. So based on our kids, we look at how we can get everybody the support they need. And then the technology piece in our district has made this a lot more doable. So kids are also working on programs that are leveled. They work at their own pace. They get to accelerate when they're ready to accelerate. They can stay back and work on the low-grade level remedial work that they may need. But technology supports that work. And so I thank you for making sure that we have that technology in our children's hands that supports my teachers. They need that help because when they're working with kids, the group out in the masses, they need something that keeps them engaged. And those programs really support that work. So I thank you for that as well. It is a difficult job to get everybody everything they need. But I'll tell you what, elementary teachers do it better than anyone. They're amazing. I constantly am in awe of the work they do. When they prepare four different guided reading lessons every single day for four different level groups and target the intervention that those kids need, you just can't ask much more of them. They're amazing. And we do the same thing in math. We do guided math at Meadows. And we will take different level kids and put them in different level groups. And if that group doesn't fit in my classroom, my teachers will share. So you may have to go next door to that classroom to get in the right group for the right intervention. That's the way we work it at Meadows. It's not perfect, but we sure work hard to make it work. And hopefully, we're going to see great results in our test scores for all of our kids. And that includes the high achieving kids that need that enrichment as well. So that's a little bit about what we're doing at Meadows. It's pretty awesome. We are going to have a big kickoff party real soon. We've written a song, and it's a surprise. And my teachers are putting together a dance, and that's a surprise. And it's going to be pretty impressive. So I would invite you all to join us. And I know Miss C. and the communications department is going to come out and put some video together of the work that we're doing around state assessments and the excitement we're bringing. But the song is going to be amazing. So be prepared.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Yes, you're so welcome.
And you know, her school last year had a red carpet on the first day of...
We're doing that again.
Are you doing that?
Yes, ma'am, are you going to join me?
Oh, Dr. Anderson, I'll see you there. Kids can walk down that red carpet and high fiving.
Yes, we do.
And just the energy is so good. We thank you so much for all that you do. So that is kind of our update on at least getting ready for state assessments and how we're serving all kids. Are there any questions from board members before we turn it over to Mrs. Crowe?
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I'm intrigued by your fitness and your running. Your school has a well-known legacy of runners. And I just wondered how you start that. I just read a headline, you know, this week or last week, about the increase in childhood obesity. And I just am curious to how, know, how you keep it going, how you start it.
And it's evolved over the years. It started before, this is my eighth year at Meadows. And it actually started before I got there. Our PTO, phenomenal group of folks, parents, that really were invested in physical education and fitness and health. And they started a run club after school, and they put a track in our building. Beautiful, beautiful. But what we found was that we were not allowing all kids to participate. So if you rode the school bus and your parents couldn't come pick you up, you maybe weren't in the run club. We had an equity issue. And so over time, we moved that to during the school day. So you could be a part of the run club, and you could earn your miles during your recess time. And we had to devise a plan, and we had to, we hand out popsicle sticks for your laps, and we count laps, and we track this on a computer program. And you're in little feet on your necklace when you hit 10 miles and get 100. When you get 100, it goes on and on and on. But it builds up the excitement, and kids are very proud of it. And you have kids, and that gives them a purpose at recess. Okay, recess can be tough at elementary schools, and some of our kids need a little more direction than go play. And so that run club has been fantastic. But like I shared, there are some kids that maybe don't shine in certain areas, and that's an opportunity for them to shine. So it's been wonderful, and our community supports it. Now, my PE teachers are also amazing, so they get a lot of the credit. But they also push those kids to get involved in 5K runs around town. We had three or four runs that we've already participated in. And you'll see Meadows kids, you know, leading the charge. And then I had three teachers this year saying, "Can we put girls in the run on, at Meadows?" So guess what? We've had girls on the run this year through the YWCA. And what a positive thing that is. And I was out there running with my little buddy Rudder this winter. Or it was November, but it was freezing like winter. And we'll be doing it again this spring. So it's a big, big push at Meadows. Physical fitness is very important to us, and we just have the right team players that are making it happen. You bet.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you again. Good to see you guys.
And now Ms. Crowe will be coming up and giving a legislative update. And again, excellent job, Ms. Johnson. We really appreciate you.
Good evening. It's good to be here and see you again. I haven't seen you all yet this year. And it's kind of timely because things kind of started moving this week. The legislature finished the first half of the session last week. You'll remember, it's called Turnaround, where the bills from the House and the Senate switch sides. And to this point, we really have not had a whole lot of activity. Obviously, the elephant in the room, if you will, is school finance and beginning decision. And there's been a lot of preparation, preparing for whatever they're going to do to prepare for addressing the decision. What we had last week was a presentation that was delivered both to the House and Senate, education, school finance committees, a joint meeting of those two committees, as well as a presentation at KSBD, the same presentation, to people in the public and school people. So what that was, Lori Taylor is the expert that was hired by the legislature to put together yet another study on the cost of education. What we're dealing with now is addressing the issue of adequacy, the question of how much is necessary to provide a public education in Kansas. So we handled the equity issue last year and how that money is distributed. Now it's how much money we put into the formula that they passed last year. So Lori Taylor is the expert that was hired. She comes from a firm that is named West Ed in Texas. What she did last week on Friday and Saturday was lay out the methodology for the study that she will be conducting between now and March 19th. And that study is to inform the decisions of legislators as they figure out how much money they need to put into schools over what period of time. And of course, she will not have any suggestions as to revenue, but I think from her presentation, they will be looking for ways that they can possibly maximize funds that are already in the formula and find ways to create efficiencies, implement efficiencies in order to mitigate the amount of money that they have to spend on making, on addressing the court's question as to adequacy. So following that, what we've come to today is after the methodology is laid out, this week, they came up with a schedule that kind of gets things moving as far as what the legislature is to expect from the expert and the timeline as we head up to the April 20th, I'm sorry, April 30th deadline. This Wednesday, the Senate Select Committee on School Finance will be meeting. That was formerly chaired by Jim Denning out of Urban Park. He has been replaced by Senator Bollybaum Gardner. She's the head also of the Senate Education Committee. So she now wears two hats. She will be calling in Dr. Jesse Levin, who is with the American Institutes for Research. And Dr. Levin is charged with doing the peer review of the expert's study on the adequacy of funding. So he will come in and present a presentation that comes on the heels of the expert's presentation on methodology. And he will dig down into that first report that came from the expert as peer review. I have not heard anything about the House having Dr. Levin in as yet, but I expect that he will also be coming in. Or that likely will be a joint meeting to hear from the peer review specialist, Dr. Levin. On Thursday, we've all been on top of the transportation waiting issue. Some are referring to it as the Dale Dennis issue, just to give you a point of reference. There will be a hearing on that on Thursday. There is a meeting tomorrow morning with some different school districts who are looking at how to respond and what, who will be presenting testimony at that hearing. And that's something that I'll be talking about with school district officials to figure out what we want to do on Thursday. That will be in the House K-12 Budget Committee. And I'll remind you that Fred Patton, Representative Fred Patton from Seaman, now chairs the House K-12 Budget Committee. He replaces Larry Campbell, who was the chairman before, but has been appointed as Governor's new budget director, Governor Collier's new budget director. Fast forward a week, Friday, March 16th. The House and the Senate each respectively hired attorneys to represent them. Last year, Senator Jeff King was hired to represent both the Senate and the House. He's a former senator from Independence and an attorney. This year, the House took a different direction and hired its own attorney to represent the House of Representatives. That attorney is Curtis Tinivan. He's with Pulsonelli Law Firm in Kansas City. Senator Jeff King was rehired to represent the Senate. The two of them will come in on Friday, March 16th and provide an overview and review of their own of the expert's study. And I guess the study report actually won't be out until that following Monday. So I guess they're going to lay the groundwork for the expert's study to come out and probably give advice to the legislature on the next steps they want to take once they have this expert study in hand. And so that's Friday, March 16th. March 19th, which is Monday, is when the study is released. Again, there will be a peer review of the study by, again, Dr. Levin on March 26th. And then the first adjournment is April 6th. So they need to have, in order to adjourn on schedule, they will need to have a bill passed and signed and sent over to the Supreme Court. If they do not meet the first adjournment deadline, they do have enough days booked. It's a, statutorily, it's a 90-day session. They could extend the session past the 6th. They would have until, I'd say, April 20th in order to allow times by, to allow enough time by April 30th for the attorneys and the state and the plaintiffs to get their briefs done into the Supreme Court so the Supreme Court can make its decision. And this is a different schedule and timeline than we've seen in the past. It's not that much of a deviation, but because of the April 30th deadline, things do look a little different than they have in the past. The veto session will begin on April 26th. And again, we have that deadline of April 30th. The Supreme Court will be looking at the briefings from both sides. Are there any questions about that schedule?
Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Ms., Madam Vice President. Thank you, Ms. Crowe, for the report. Very interesting. And this is kind of a, it seems like the first half of Turnaround, there was a whole lot of action. And the thing that really is going to drive the majority of the action session in total, they didn't really do a whole lot with. But I'm imagining there's a bunch of machinations and things going on behind the scenes.
Right. I am hearing that the transportation waiting issue may continue to be something that House leadership, possibly Senate leadership, continue to look to when reviewing the formula and perhaps calling to question the, how the funds are distributed. So given that that was allegedly, those funds were distributed outside of the formula, that, I think they are calling that into question and looking at all the different pieces of the formula to see if...
Which is always really interesting because there are all kinds of formulas, whether it's Medicaid, whether it's, you know, any of the other kinds of ones related to school finance, where there's always a deviation up or down according to legislative. They get a chance to make that clear every year when they review their budget. And they said, "Okay, good, you did what we wanted." I'll give you a good example. One in which, if we made the same claim, they owe us millions and millions of dollars because they've caused us to have to prorate our LOB state aid because they just didn't have the money to fund what was legally in the formula. So that's, it's an interesting claim, and I get why they're doing it. And you shouldn't respond to that part, but...
Hopefully, those issues will be resolved in the expert's study. And of course, that expert's study will be peer reviewed, and we will have the opportunity to have some input on that also.
So I did have a couple of questions about the study. I didn't get a chance to go over and listen to the testimony at the joint meeting on Friday with the expert, but I know you were there. This study, so first of all, how many studies? What study number is this?
As far as what is on the table...
If we were to go to August Look and Myers to now...
Dr. Levin is looking, is looking at the LPA and the August Look and Meyer. And then we have Alvarez and Marcel, but that was more of a global look at the budget overall. But those are the two studies along with this study.
Those are two he's focusing on. Because I can remember, I remember just from the time since I've been here, the A&amp;M study, there was one that was a survey that the Department of Labor itself did.
Now, this isn't taking into consider, into consideration any of the studies that have been conducted by KSBD alone. I guess the LPA would be the closest to that as far as an internal audit. And then August Look and Myers was the external audit.
I mean, you know, when you attach the dollar figure, you have to make calls on those. I mean, Alvarez and Marcel was 2.3 million or something like that.
Three million.
Three, two, give or take a few other thousand.
But was that a beautiful...
Yeah. So, yeah, I'm just wondering, it's, that's a dork question. I'm curious about the consultant. So there were some significant concerns that were raised that I always saw the news clip about the consultant and the consultant's qualifications for the scope and... clip about the consultant and the consultant's qualifications for the scope, and I don't remember what that was. I was wondering if you could...
They started out... Dr. Taylor started her presentation pointing to work they had done in Texas, and what I think she was doing was laying out that the Supreme Court in Texas called into question the base data per pupil as the basis. And I think she was trying to start out drawing a connection to Kansas, saying, "This is why Texas criticized my work, but my work is in tandem with the way that we support valuing or basing funding on the per pupil formula." So, I think the criticism had to do with the reception that she received in Texas, but that was because the court took a different approach and took a different viewpoint of the base data per pupil. And at Kansas, we have been tied to the base data per pupil as our basis. So, I think that was the main criticism.
And I also don't recall any of the studies ever having an official peer review, so they're going to have AAR come in with a researcher to do a peer review.
Right. Now, one other criticism is that in some of the other studies that they've conducted, they have tended to veer toward less money, the money that you have is sufficient. So, that to some has been seen as a bias possibly by the expert over from spending. And the issue with spending is that they raised taxes last year, and this being an election year, it's going to be a difficult undertaking to raise taxes again.
Was there any discussion about the, you know, the scope of the study? What I liked when LPA did this is they would always actually, in referring, they referred to legislative research and talk about all of the statutory requirements that school districts have and why they think you would be better off spending money here than here. We understand that how this will be here until the legislature changes and explains this issue. Was there any discussion about that kind of...
And those questions were asked whether the expert used the tools that are available to the legislature and to the department, and they confirmed that they had utilized those resources.
That's really my only study question.
But again, we only have the methodology for how the study will be conducted, so the work is still has to be done.
I'm maybe a little less confident that they'll have a bill by this stage.
It's going to be tough.
Any other questions?
We also... I might also mention, as of yesterday, we were invited to a meeting that Representative Brenda Landwehr, who's a Republican from Wichita, pulled together, and she had met with Wichita's school district already and with their mental health center, and invited KCK and Topeka to come and meet. And this is about finding... forming some relationships, possibly a pilot program to have the CMHC's partner or have some sort of memorandum of understanding to provide mental health services in schools and help complement the services that are here and expand upon them. So, we will be meeting every Thursday for the next... probably for the remainder of the regular session through April. We did find that there is a new mental health position for the Board of Education, the State Board, and they have a group that has also been looking at the same... a team, or I think it might be a committee, has also been looking at the same issue. So, I talked with Ann Maugh, who's our State Board member, this afternoon, and we're going to connect with that group and that person so that we can all keep on the same page and not reproduce or step all over each other or make sure everything is bringing hand in hand. Then, my second slide is about guns in schools. When I wrote this last week, it was obviously one of the biggest, still remains a major issue, but for your information, because of the shooting in Florida, there has been a lot of discussion about guns in schools. Chris Kovak, who's the Secretary of State, also a candidate for governor, penned a piece in the Breitbart News talking about Army teachers, and that's something that has been a lot... in the press a lot and has been in the press a lot in Kansas. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention. There were... There are three bills, gun bills, that were pulled from the schedule after the Florida tragedy last week. One of those has to do with the Eddie Eagle program. That's an NRA program on gun safety that would be K through eight, and then Hunter Education Program that is currently available to schools for grades nine through 12. That's by Wildlife and Parks. That bill passed the House but was pulled from the Senate Federal and State Affairs Committee Agenda. And likewise, there is a bill that deals with reciprocity of gun laws and gun ownership that would also lower the age to 18 to conceal carry in Kansas because of the reciprocity piece. So, that was pulled from the agenda as well. It does... They passed guns on campus last year, and it would tweak that so you would have to have a permit to carry them on campus, but then at the same time, that's what takes the age down to age 18. So, those two bills still sit in Senate Committee, and the third bill...
Can we let the record show too for our... Because we have the exact same thing you have on our computers, and there's... Somehow, the one that's up there has our TPS Senior of the Month written into the... But that is not in your presentation.
That's in schools, has nothing to do...
Correct. Or Mr. Ben has nothing to do with Chris Kovak's, you know, his proposition. And that's not your issue either. That's a technical, on-computer technology thing.
There is a third bill on domestic violence that would close a loophole on the partner, boyfriend, girlfriend, for victims of domestic violence and gun ownership. That bill also sits in the Senate Committee and has passed the House. So, those are the three pieces of legislation, but I expect this to continue to percolate. There is supposed to be a kind of global response to the guns in schools question and response to the Florida tragedy. That could look like our security measures for buildings, like building-based security, door locks, that kind of thing. Also, I think the arming of teachers will continue to be a part of the discussion, so that's something to keep an eye on.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Are there any other questions for Ms. Crowe?
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sorry, forgot to use this. We're going to be having an executive session after this meeting and the general meeting, and so I thought we would just ask for any more comments before we ask for abortions in the executive session. Anyone? Dr. Everett Williams has something I'd like to share.
I think it was Monday afternoon, if my memory serves me correctly, this was the one week at the place where I attended our first commencement of 2018 graduations season at the JBC.
So, we have one young person?
One young person, yeah.
Any others in the pipeline that we can come through? Do we have any others that are coming along too?
Well, there's one of another condition one.
And Ms. Morrissey is in the audience. I believe there are three students, two more students, and there may be one as well from Highland Park High, something new that we've done. A couple of Ms. Morrissey is really kind of decorated to the extent that can be done and making it feel as though it's a formal ceremony as it would be if they were not there. Thank you.
I think it's important that we do this. I thank you for making a special occasion for these folks. They're in a tough place. Dr. Nicole?
Okay.
I don't have anything like this. So, I have a motion to... The executive session, please.
Madam Vice President, I move at the board recess to executive session to discuss individual employee contracts, performance perspective on labor personnel, and the meeting to be closed, and the meeting to resume at 8:00.